I'm just curious if they had anything well or not.
I would.
Supervisors there have had a credit. So they've been here.
Yeah, you know. I don't know.
All right, nine thirty, we'll call the meeting to order. First item approved the agenda now. There's doesn't need to be an agenda item, but I did ask Gary Smith, the assessor, to come up and kind of give an idea. I know some people get some. Things in the mail that's. Breaking them out a little bit. And so maybe a good opportunity to kind of explain how the assessments are done, things like that. So I'd like to. Get him out of the way first, so he can get back down and continue taking phone calls. You're welcome. So need approval of the agenda.
Question approved.
Second.
Those in favor?
I.
Who's opposed? Gary, if we want to give a.
Okay, this is. You know what hap- happening statewide.
Can you come up front here so we can have you on camera? People will know what you look like. That way they ain't attacking, they ain't attacking other people in public.
What's happening statewide is property values have gone up. About what? About twenty-one percent of statewide. It's probably the average. Ours went up about twenty-three percent. And it's all driven by what the houses are actually selling for. We have to meet. That value. Required by the state now. What's going to do to taxes? We don't know yet. Cause there's mechanism to roll that back. Every, every year, there's too much of a higher increase.
So. Value can only go up statewide three percent.
Correct, right.
So I think that's a big, that's a big number there. So a lot of that'll be eaten up in rollbacks.
Right. Rollback will help. And the bottom line is if the budgets don't go up too much for the taxing bodies, then the taxes won't go up. Bad as this increase.
I think. A lot of what I would like the people to know is how that comes about. I know your office, you have to go through. Monitor the sales or however, all that goes through. And as you said, that's a state. State requirement from your office, but a lot of this is this like an equalization?
This is an equalization year. So if I don't meet the statute statutory statutory. Level of assessment, the state will come in and increase my assessments to meet that level. So if my medium increases. Or my medium sales ratio is twenty percent low, I have to raise properties. Twenty percent. But like I said, this is happening in every county, just about in Iowa.
And I know I've talked to a couple of other supervisors that was getting stuff out last week that, you know, I, I think that's important. This isn't. This isn't just Waplo County. This isn't just Davis County. It's a statewide. State mandated. The way this is done.
Right.
And again, I think you, you said it in your letter here, just because your assessment goes up. A hundred thousand dollars doesn't mean your taxes are going to go up that. I mean, we're. We all do a, a good job of doing our best to, to lower that levy, use the monies needed. I seen the courier today. The city is lowering the tax levy.
Right.
Again, this year. For I don't know how many straight years it is now that the county will be. Without an increase. Now difference this year is valuation wasn't there this year.
Right.
So.
Valuations dropped a little bit last year.
Right. Any questions you guys have? You said you got a call.
Yep, I've had a couple of phone calls. People freaking out their taxes when it's twenty percent.
Now, people have the option if they don't think they can sell their property for what it's assessed for, they. Have the month of April to protest to the board review. And we have the forms at our office or you go to department revenue. Website and get the forms or it's on our website. Our goal is to actually hit market value. But since it's kind of a. Blanket increase, we don't always hit it. Some might need a little bit more and some might need less.
Can you tell us, maybe you don't know this number off the top of your head, but what was the increase in? Assess value due to new construction in the, in the county?
I don't know it off the top of my head, but it's probably like two percent.
Of the total assessment. What, what that being dollar amount?
I would have.
Yes.
Get the figures.
So, so two percent.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, do you have any questions? You, you said that, that you're not sure what it'll do to taxes yet. Do you know when that, when you will know that? I don't have a guess limit on that.
These will be the taxes that you pay in the fall. Of twenty-four and the spring of twenty-five. So the project and it's, it's just way too far, really, yes.
The state will tell us what the rollback.
Right.
Number is. That changes every year. What does it tell you? Usually like forty-seven percent or back to forty-seven percent or.
We're fifty-four.
Fifty-six.
I think that's fifty-four.
The projection had to drop in the forties.
So a lot of this will be made up with the rollback.
Right.
Which says. With the rollback, your house is valued at a hundred thousand dollars and they say that it can only be taxed at. Fifty-six percent or forty-four percent or whatever what it is. Therefore, that house is now. For taxing purposes, a fifty-six thousand dollar house. Correct?
Correct.
So, and then it's.
Right. So is the lower the percentage of rollback, the better it is for the taxpayer then?
Yes.
So it's like forty-seven percent. Their house is then taxed at fifty-three thousand, using a hundred thousand dollar value.
Actually, the rollback is the exact figure they pay.
Taxes on.
Right.
So the lower the better then?
Right.
Right, okay.
And then after that, it's up to the taxing. Entities, of course, we have. Our maxes that we can do and. What we're capped at. So really, no one's truly going to know. What it does until next year, but. All in all, I don't expect people's taxes to go up. Because of this. And we, you know, we went through this a few years ago and we got the numbers back from the. Statewide assessment that was, you know, thirty-some years behind.
Yes.
Or whatever on it, so. Not the first time we've dealt with, with these calls and. And so probably won't be the last. Maybe the last for you, but.
Couple more years.
Yeah.
Now properties start dropping in value, the opposite will happen. But that doesn't mean your taxes will go down if they drop either.
Right. I think that's important too, so.
Yes.
Any questions or comments, anything anymore? Yep.
So I just to add something, I, I found kind of interesting. I was talking to a gentleman this morning and what you were talking about taxes. We were looking at his past taxes and. I looked at, I think it was the year payable two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. His taxes had, had only increased maybe two or three hundred dollars in total from. Ten to twelve years ago. Now they fluctuated a lot in that time, but just in talking to him, him and I both found it interesting that. That his total taxes had only gone up a couple hundred dollars in that ten-year timeframe. So I think that's something that, that might be important for people to, to look at or realize as well, so.
Then I think it's important to point out, all of us sitting in these seats or Gary, whoever else, we pay taxes too.
Oh, yes.
And I know mine couple, last year went up, I think six hundred dollars that I, that I paid. And again, it's close to what I paid for the house, the assessment on it. So that's. You know, can't really contest much with that, but. So. See any other questions or comments or anything you got, Gary? Then I appreciate your time coming up and explaining some of that.
That's, that's not a problem.
All right, thank you. Next minute of the March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three board meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moving second and all those in favor?
I, I.
That was opposed. Number three, public hearing to establish a paving district for Ashland Road from end of pavement to Seventieth Avenue. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Those in favor?
I.
All right. This is a public hearing. Kelly, you got any written or verbal comments? Anyone here today have anything they'd like to? Talk about on this issue?
You guys anything?
Motion, motion to close.
Second.
Those in favor of closing the public hearing?
I, I.
Opposed? Resolution number seventeen, twenty twenty-three to establish a paving district. Um, this is seventy-five, twenty-five. We kind of explained a little bit of this before. The county has a. Policy in effect that if landowners, property owners along that route or anywhere for that matter, we done one here. Last fall as well, that the property owner will pay twenty-five, seventy-five percent, county paid twenty-five percent. The only thing I would say in this resolution that I would like to change. Is the dollar amounts in there? Is there a reason we have to have the dollar amounts in there?
Um, the dollar amounts are just estimates.
Okay.
From the. And when we did this. For one hundred eighteenth avenue, those dollar amounts were there. This is just provide information. It's more informational than anything. To the board.
So if this project goes up, are we tied into that to those dollar amounts?
No, in no way, shape, or form.
Okay.
Um, the project cost will is the act. Landowners will pay the actual seventy-five percent of actual construction costs. We won't know that official number until construction end.
Right. That's, that was my biggest, I just don't want to put that down and then. Oil spikes and we're. You know.
Essentially, this is a, this paving district is technically a. Can be viewed as kind of a loan from the county. Where the property owners will pay back this seventy-five percent over a ten-year period into the general fund. Call on as assessments to their taxes.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moving second and all those in favor?
I, I.
Those opposed? Need to set a date for a public hearing for FY twenty-three, twenty-four Waplo County budget. Almost seems like we've just done this a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah. When I got my proof of publication back from the courier, all the ones. Within our numbers was. Quotation marks. So we had to start our ten, twenty day process over again.
And the same thing happened with emergency management.
Redo their bu- budget amendment as well. Is there nines were all, no, their ones were all double Fs.
I'm making motion to set table eighteen, nine thirty for the public. Second.
Those in favor?
I.
Those opposed? Resolution number twenty-one, twenty twenty-three, family farm tax credits. Kelly, anything? Not on this, this is a yearly. Yearly resolution we have to do.
Motion to approve.
Those in favor?
All right.
Those opposed? Optimal managed transplant programs through United Healthcare Insurance Company renewal. Lane, is there?
Yeah, um, this is, we purchase this every year and it's a requirement I have having the self-insurance piece that, um, in United Healthcare. This is the June one renewal, the other covered is eleven one. Um, the reason why is because the, we changed the dates probably about nine years ago when we had to switch carriers in the street. The rates are almost identical to what they were last year. Um, and it's just based on whatever the census is that the county has employed on a monthly basis.
Any questions?
Making motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Seven FY twenty twenty-two cost allocation plan for DHS.
It's just the audit that they do of DHS records, which. Um, I think contributes to like our portion of, to make sure that we're giving them what they, we need to as a county.
Questions?
Is there a dollar amount on that at all?
Um. One. So like putting the total reimbursement for the years to be thirty-eight thousand fifty-one.
Second.
Those in favor?
I.
Those opposed? Hey, fire alarm lighting upgrades to elevator at Waplo County Law Center. Uh, we replaced the elevator here a few months ago and this is kind of the final pieces. By state regulations and federal regulations and.
Yeah, they haven't started on the upgrade.
Oh, they haven't.
No, they're starting in May, but they're looking.
We approved it.
Yes, but you approved, yes, sir. And, uh, they said there needs to be more lighting than then fire alarms. Uh, in the, in the mechanical room area as well as they're telling me it needs to be camera. This monitor twenty-four seven, so we're looking to tie that camera into. Our system there at the sheriff's office, which is already monitored by our employees. So. I am told this is a mandated thing that we have to do. And so that's the quote I have there for you. I guess nine, nine hundred dollars. Thousand four hundred ninety-five. What's that? Nine thousand four hundred ninety-five? Is that what it is? Well, it makes everybody feel better. It's like a hundred dollars cheaper.
Make a motion to approve. Then we'll pay for this out of sales tax. I think it's, well, I would say it's probably going to be the easiest step of the other. That's probably what's going to go out of there.
I think that's what we're paying the.
Yeah, it is.
Second motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Those opposed? Approval of new job description bridge foreman for secondary roads.
Uh, we are in a unique position through retirements and the. Retirements of employees and the retirements of our local bridge crew. Uh, the other counties have, have a bridge crew. Um, I think we, we should be able to start doing our, some of our own bridges, smaller bridges. And I believe we can cut down a lot of costs. Um, what, two thousand nineteen, we constructed a bridge up by Don. Up in the northeast. Don Swanson for a hundred and seventy-nine thousand. If we, I estimate that if we would have done it ourselves, it would have cost under a hundred thousand. That's just one bridge. Um, currently we do have a vacancy within our own staff. That's. Where this position would go, go to, um, this position would be more geared towards bridges, but would not necessarily be only bridges. They would be pipes, box culverts. Anything, any of, and ditching. Or, and running our ditching crews. Questions, concerns?
Uh, we had a discussion before about not filling this, cause. We have not other plans for, correct?
Uh, I've never, I know you guys wanted to hire an assistant engineer. Um, an assistant engineer to fill this role. Uh, they would not be able to get their certification.
To fill the roles for.
Fill, filling these, these duties for the existing working form, forming duties.
Why wouldn't they?
Cause they would not be engineering. They're just more maintenance. Involved where. Not involved in all aspects of engineering. They're just more. You know, people who were the bullies, murderers. Ditching.
Couldn't that position be? Bitted that way to where it would be an assistant engineer position that would also. Be over. The people there. Like the, like the working form of position. Uh, I hate saying over the people there, but.
So in replacement of like the superintendent?
Sure.
So essentially. Part of those duties, like being over like a bridge crew would be because they're working on actual structures, working with plans. And, uh. Doing engineering. But as far as controlling like what the motor graders do on a daily basis, the mowers do, that would not be part of that.
Who would do that?
That's where the, that's, so right now the superintendent does it all. So what I, what I suggest, um, is that we would hire assistant, they would be over our DOT construction. So such as our. You know, our internal staff that does our inspections on bridges and stuff like that. But also be over our bridge crew and working with them on a daily basis whenever they're actually working on bridges. Or fox over.
Darren, you, you brought that up about the assistant to me. I didn't get your answer completely, but my thought is, is that even if we do the assistant. This is still a position that is. Would be needed because this would be more of a working supervisor on the job site. As opposed to an assistant engineer. To me, there's this distinction between.
But we've already got. Supervisor down there and Dan, right? Jerry, Jerry's. You still on the books?
No.
You're officially off now. So I'm still not in favor of filling this till we have a time to sit down and talk. Figure out what we want to do exactly.
And I, I appreciate your, um, Google Drive. I watched that like three times. I think there's some good ideas there in it on both sides. Of it, the equipment and. And reorganizing. I think this reorganization. That, that you're proposing and even, even to a point what we've. Internally discussed, I think is, uh. It's going to be a bigger overtaking than, than just hiring this person or put, and, and this is.
Right.
This, we're not hiring this person. This person's already. Employed by the county, correct?
Correct, yeah. And the overall organization is going to take, you know, a good ten, fifteen years.
Right.
This is just step one of that process.
I think with strictly my opinion, I think. I think we're going in the right direction. I like the ideas of it. I just think when we're doing something of this magnitude. Over, overhauling a department in a sense. Like secondary roads, it's going to take a lot more discussion than. Just, just putting this in. I can't say I'm against it. But right now. I, I think we need to. Probably have a work session. The three of us in, in here on, doesn't matter. With you and, and to go over that and probably going to take more than one work session as well.
Uh, may I? Make a request?
Yep.
Uh, may I ask that you guys approve the job description, but I will hold off on filling that position until we actually get things squared away.
I would still just say wait till we have our meetings, so we get everything lined up where we want to go.
I mean, I think there's things with this, it becomes, you know, as we're looking at the equipment and we're going to get down to this motor grader here shortly.
Yes.
Uh, well, next. We're in. We're in a case right now, we're going to have to spend some money on equipment. I think every one of us knows that.
Absolutely.
When we start putting in, you know, for more equipment, more like the bridge stuff, I don't disagree with you that. It could save us money. What is our buy-in on the front end of that when we're already in a sense behind the eight ball on so much equipment? Makes sense?
Yep.
So. So, uh, what's the pleasure of the board on this job description lead? Want to motion second it and then vote on it or?
I've just seen table until after our discussions. That we have work sessions.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion to table it till after the work sessions.
I'll second it.
Okay, cheers.
Yep. All right, all those in favor of, uh. Tabling the job description for bridge foreman?
I.
I. Opposed?
I.
Authorization to purchase new equipment, motor grader, warning and attachments.
So this. Spring earlier this year, I put out requests for two motor graders. Uh. John Deere came back with a seven seventy-two G all wheel drive and Cat came back with a one forty all wheel drive. Uh, total price, John Deere is five hundred forty-four thousand six hundred and eighty. My Caterpillar is five hundred and eighteen thousand. Five hundred and seventy-eight. I am making the request that we. Purchase the eight-year nine thousand dollar full machine warranty. Um, the hydraulics setup and the five kind ripper with the, the, uh, snow wings. And the other attachments. And that comes out for the total of five hundred and eighteen thousand. Five hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Now this, if you order this today by your.
If we.
You're looking at eighteen month timeframe, right?
Yep. We won't get it until. I don't, I do not expect to see a bill for this until next fiscal year.
The one we start in July or the one we start in July twenty-four?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
So twenty-four, twenty-five.
So this isn't currently on a budget?
No.
So this.
This one would not fit within this budget that we're currently in for next year's budget.
So we won't see a bill on this till twenty-five?
Correct.
FY twenty-four.
Yes.
Well, I think, uh, I think that gives us a year. To figure out financing on that.
Right.
I think it's something we're going to have to get ordered. As I said, I mean, we're. We're up against it on it, on a lot of things, so.
I guess I make a motion, go ahead and.
And we could look next year too. I know, you know, part of the plan is maybe paying for it out of basic. With that, we pretty much use our carryover in a sense. Now whether it was with this one or another one, or however we did it. So. I'm not in favor of that right now. I mean, we look at what our budget surpluses are. Um, at the end of next year, you know, maybe that's a, you know, I, I look at just that these are. Actual twenty-one, twenty-two. We had five point two million carryover balance.
Yeah.
Lot of that was attributed to the mental health. Um, being taken over by the state and we were able to kind of put some back in a sense. That drop estimated this year for, for. The budget we're in now. To about four point six. And then. After this budget. We're looking at probably drop somewhere to three point four. Now these are estimates. That could be higher, that could be lower.
Yep.
But we could be looking at using one point two million out of carryover balance. So. The public don't see. The increase. Now.
Okay.
That gives us probably one more year of doing that or a combination of that. Before we're down to our. Basement. Where we can't drop it anymore because by state we have to have twenty-five percent in there. And I think that's in about one point seven million range somewhere in that. So, you know, to take a half million out of that, that's. That's where right now, now. You know, hopefully some things happen and, and that's healthy again, and maybe we can look at that in the future.
And we'll see on our end how our budget ends up shaping up. And upon the project costs and stuff like that.
A second motion.
Any further discussion? Comments? Questions? All those in favor of ordering the motor grader, warranty and attachments?
I, I.
Those opposed? All right. Jenny Runyon, court to court.
Good morning, Johnny. We have, we should have a seat at the table. There's going to be a meeting without handouts. That goes with handouts for you folks.
Good morning. I'm Ira Duncan. I am the chief judge of the Eighth Judicial District. I'm from Fairfield, born and raised in Fairfield. I think all of you got a copy of the letter that I sent. I'm from Fairfield, born and raised in Fairfield. Um, I think all of you got a copy of the letter that I sent, uh, I think last week. Date is March twenty eighth about security concerns that we have in the Waplo County courthouse. Understand we have uh, security concerns in most of our courthouses. Uh, but in particular, we've had some uh, concerns about complaints uh, at the Waplo County courthouse. Uh, and security issues here. I've outlined some of those uh, in the letter that I sent to you. I'm not gonna go through those today. Although we're certainly gonna be open to, to questions that you may have about that. Uh, my concern is the chief judge of the eighth district is the safety of the personnel that serves the judicial branch. Whether that's a judge or a court reporter or court attendant or the staff in the clerk's office. Uh, our magistrates, whoever that may be, uh, my paramount concern is their safety while they're on the job. Uh, and doing the work that they're called upon to do uh, as part of the judicial branch. Obviously, we're here in a county courthouse, uh, and uh, we need to work together as far as security concerns of. Are concerned, and I've given to you a handout. Uh, this is uh, these are guidelines that were adopted by ISAC, obviously your state organization, as well as the Iowa Judicial Council. That judicial council is comprised of all of the chief judges of the eight districts of Iowa. As well as the chief justice of the Iowa Supreme Court and all of our district court administrators. Uh, and uh, so these are guidelines that we have been trying to implement uh, and, and assist the different counties in implementing too. And I wanted to pro- provide that to you, if nothing else, as a reminder of what those guidelines are, uh, and so uh. Would appreciate all of you taking a look at that as maybe we start some dialogue. And that's exactly what I asked i- in my letter was to start a dialogue about uh, the safety concerns that we have in the Waplo County courthouse. Uh, I appreciate Sheriff Phillips being here today, obviously I included him on that letter and also the Waplo County Court Department for Jennifer Runyon. Uh, because Jennifer is uh, the clerk of court is on the front line too in terms of complaints that come in. Uh, or things that may happen in the court, the court's office. The other thing that I am very concerned about, not only the uh, safety of our personnel, but it's just all of the citizens that come to the Waplo County courthouse. Uh, and sit in the hallways, uh, whether it's fourth floor, third floor or first floor down with the magistrate's office or second floor with clerk of court's office. Uh, I think we have a, an obligation uh, to look out for the safety of the citizens that come to uh, the Waplo County courthouse to do any kind of judicial business. Uh, again, we've had uh, concerns about some incidents that have, uh, that have happened here. And, and as a result, uh, are basically at this point, uh, wanting to introduce you to um. Uh, a dialogue that will help us address those safety concerns. I think there are three components to that. One is uh, law enforcement uh, presence at the courthouse uh, during judicial functions. And I know Sheriff Phillips uh, and I have uh, exchanged emails and I know he's short-staffed and money is always an issue on these kinds of things. Uh, but I think that's an important issue and in fact, that's addressed in the uh, guidelines for courthouse and public building security handout that I gave to you. Uh, the other thing are just facility changes and I know that, um, my understanding anyway is that. There are some changes being made in terms of locks on doors and things of that, all of which are important part of uh, maintaining security and safety in the courthouse. Uh, but we also would ask for you to consider other kinds of facility changes. That may help direct traffic in a safer way that may give us a better opportunity uh, to screen who may be coming uh, into judicial facilities or, or proceedings. Uh, and those types of things. The third component is on us as a judicial branch is just trying to look at our scheduling. Uh, and see uh, how we can best schedule things between district court, between district associate court, juvenile court. All of those different things, how can we schedule them so that we don't have people coming en masse to the courthouse at the same time if we can help that? Uh, because that in and of itself uh, can, can create a security risk when you have too many people. Uh, for uh, any kind of security uh, to, to work. So those are all things we want to talk about, uh, and uh, obviously today is not intended to reach any answers or conclusions. Is to give you an opportunity to ask us some questions. Uh, what I intend to probably do uh, after we meet today. Is kind of reactivate the local Waplo County uh, security committee, courthouse security committee. Uh, according to these guidelines, uh, the security committees of every courthouse are supposed to meet at least twice a year. Uh, I think maybe once this program about started, that was happening, uh, now I'm not sure it is. Uh, as a result, uh, I'd like to see that security committee meet. Uh, there's supposed to be a supervisor on that security committee, uh, and so uh, I don't know who that may in name be at this point. Uh, but we obviously want the, uh, the uh, board supervisors to be a part of that. We want law enforcement, we'll have the sheriff's office to be a part of it. Everybody that's named and is supposed to be on that committee, uh, I want to make sure it is active, uh, and we're talking about these things again. So uh, Danny, do you have anything you want to add to those comments?
Not really, my main thing is I just want to be able to start some conversations about things that we can possibly do differently to make, um, you know, the employees working in and out of the building. Feel comfortable with my staff, my office, um, you know, support the tennis, support for the people that aren't here every day. Uh, maybe don't know the lay of the land quite as well as my staff does. Um, and I agree with George Kukun, I think it's gonna start with the safety and security committee, you know, do some evaluations of the building. Kind of look things over, talk about where areas that we have issues with security. Um, you know, kind of put together a proposal of what we could possibly do to fix that and then bring that to the board, you know, to see, see what we can do to make some changes. I just want my staff to feel safe to come to work every day.
And as I pointed out in my letter, it was uh, a wake-up call for me anyway to have a court reporter. Uh, who has worked in this courthouse and all other courthouses of, uh, sub district DA uh, for years uh. To tell me that she doesn't feel safe when coming to the Waplo County courthouse anymore. Uh, when I have an employee that uh, doesn't feel safe in coming to this courthouse anymore. Uh, after being here for many, many years, that tells me that we've got to do something uh, to help improve the security here. So again, we're starting a dialogue, open to any questions you may have, uh, and uh, will appreciate the time you give.
Just uh, and I, Chief Judge, I sent an email that we have uh, not talked to a couple of you that we have some. A little bit of money and a lot of line items that I think we could utilize and, and have armed security here. Uh, we're looking like on Mondays from nine to three, this is kind of a high volume tonight, I'm certain it's that day on, and uh. You know, I, I do have it scheduled out through the end of, uh, I believe it's till the end of May and uh. But you know, it's, it's a temporary thing, it's not something that can be carried on for. For uh, years to come, I guess, at this point, you know, and, and I think it's one of those things, it's a temporary fix and we can. You know, obviously we're gonna have to have some further dialogue about this, but at least I just wanted to let you guys know that I do have people that signed up for the overtime and that's. It's out through the end of May, we'll have somebody at the courthouse on Mondays from nine to three. And then, you know, we, we did an update of the uh, the panic button system, you know, we did a. Pretty large upgrade, but that made it more modernized and it goes to our radio system with those buttons are pushed and notifies us immediately. Tom P hears that, if they're scanning the, the, our radio channel, they'll hear that and then they all know to respond. Um, you know, we just uh, had them all test here, uh, just a few months ago and, and had a. Upgrade with uh, data with the system done also, so. Those are just a couple of things we've done here recently, just sort of the works where. I sent you an email about talking with the chief. Anything there? Now, I, I haven't talked to him because I, I had somebody sign up for the, I had one person sign up for several, several of those days and I got them all covered till May. You know, I just, we just need to get something else going before it runs out. Well, I guess we need to sit down and talk about it then.
And can I just uh, as a suggestion or food for thought as, as we talk about this? Um, I know Des Moines County, which is the other big county in the eighth district. Um, they actually, I think have employed part-time, you may know about this, I don't know if you do, but they, they've employed a part-time retired. Uh, law enforcement officer, uh, and I'm not quite sure how you do that to give them the authority of law. But they're actually uh, armed and they're there during the court service days. Uh, so it doesn't take anybody away from your staff, but would be a security person that would have the authority to act. Uh, and to make the necessary con- contacts in the event we have a, an issue. So that might be in terms of a budget, uh, a better way to approach it than trying to tap into the sheriff's staff. Because we know already you need short staffed and, and uh. You can't do it forever. We wish, we wish we could do that, but we understand that.
And we have talked about that, Don and I talked about it the other day and I was trying to hire someone Saturday, but. They're not interested, um.
May also interject, I would suggest, you know, obviously, one of your board members is also law enforcement. Patterson, and then frankly. I will note this county has a issue with violence, obviously it's something y'all are aware of. I've made two reports to the FBI due to death threats I've gotten that I felt were credible through my time as county attorney. We had fairly violent people come to our office that are out on bond on. And have multiple new crimes while out on bond and keep bombing. I think there's a lot of issues that it. That need to be attended to that honestly have festered for a long time. Waplo County unfortunately has had a poor reputation in terms of crime for a long time, but I think it's the first time or else is seeing some of what. Well, I've seen out in the county already, Officer Badger's scene as well. Um. Maybe a meeting between OPD chairs, chief judge, I do think I should be involved. Would help, because I do think even if we get some security in the courthouse, which is frankly needed, this is the first courthouse I serve in that doesn't have security. On a regular basis, uh, that's only going to help to an immediate extent. I mean, if you have a crowd of people and one officer and they're trying to tend to one person that's. Making a ruckus, they can still get stabbed or attacked from behind. Frankly, I've seen it happen. I've been in the courtrooms when defendants attack others. I've seen them. Days taken down. Bottom line, this is more of a global issue with lots of factors that need to be tended to. Now, that would be my suggestion aside from the committee, which is larger. And would be harder to get together, maybe just. A super board of, of member. And pretty much all the heads of difference. Groups, courthouse, county attorney's office, sheriff's office, OPD get together, I think that would be pretty useful. And easier to do than a whole committee, because a committee I think has a ten slots, twelve slots, something like that.
And we do approve that every year. I mean, it's an intact, I think, Don, we're at dawn to that. I don't know why he wasn't on there, but. Um. You know, it is, it is there, it's just, I don't know if it's ever been. Had a meeting since I've been here.
I have never been to one, so.
I don't think it's that even during my predecessor's time, so.
And, and Darren is on that.
So that, that safety committee is already established, should we really don't need to take an action to, to establish that committee?
It's actually on your website.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, I mean, in mind, again, my goal would be after meeting here today and assuming that. You will feel comfortable with what I'm suggesting is getting that uh, committee re-energized and, and making sure everybody that is on that committee knows they're on that committee. And setting a meeting and uh, and try and make some, uh, some uh, progress, uh, which again will include one of the supervisors.
Would, would you take the lead on that or should?
I will take, I will take the lead on that, okay, and there actually, there is a judge assigned to that committee. Uh, but uh, I will take the lead on, on getting that uh, re-energized, and, and I also just want to say. Tremendous respect and, and appreciation for our, our law enforcement uh, and Waplo County as well as all the other counties. Whenever we have a potential security risk, when we know somebody's coming in uh, to address a contested matter in court. Uh, we make a phone call to the local sheriff's office and say, hey, we really think we need a deputy because things could go south. There's always a deputy and we appreciate that. We, we need that support. And uh, they take somebody, uh, whoever they can and get them in the courtroom and uh, that, that's a whole different issue. Uh, uh, from, from facilities issue, uh, that, that may be a part of this. But uh, I just want to say thank you to law enforcement for always being available when we have those special situation where we know we better have somebody there. I'm talking more about the day-to-day stuff, uh, the court service days that happen every week in district associate court and district court. Um, as well as uh, juvenile hearings, I mean, you know, things get hot, uh, when you're talking about families and uh, disputes that are going on.
A plan to move forward. What Ruben brings up, though, I think is a bigger question, and that is the whole issue of. Of our responses at county to the criminal activity in the county. And I, and I'm, I've wondered in the past, and maybe this is the time to say this, is do we need to do a committee of, of all of us that have interest in that? To discuss, you know, to discuss, to make sure we're kind of on the same page, we're all working together to, to bring a positive outcome.
I don't know if that would fall under the safety committees guidelines.
I don't think so.
Look at their.
I think it's a bigger issue of safety.
I think it would be abuse, given the county also funds jail. Contracts with DOC for the halfway house of those matters. Absolutely, and can be discussed amongst county, the judge of. Circuit of judges and.
And we don't necessarily have to do this today, but perhaps we could consider a structure for a committee that would address that issue. Why don't we proceed that way?
Any other questions? We're happy to try and answer anything. This is just the start.
What about like magistrate court? Who's, who schedules those?
Well, those are basically scheduled by the magistrates and they're gonna have to be a part of that discussion too. I mean, honestly, uh. Judicial functions happen on every floor of this courthouse. Uh, first floor magistrate, second floor clerk's office, third floor district court, uh, fourth floor associate juvenile court. Uh, so it's, it's throughout the courthouse and the magistrates are gonna have to be a part of this too. They're right inside the front door.
Right, and there's like several times, I mean, in the morning when you come in and there can be fifteen to twenty people sitting down there. You know, or standing because there's not a room for them to sit. You know, and us as employees are walking in not knowing what we're walking into as well.
Some of those hearings are scheduled, but a lot of those people that have uh, potentially got arrested maybe the night before. Or over the weekend and are appearing in court for their initial hearing, so a lot of them are, are scheduled. Not necessarily by the magistrates, but by, by the court saying, hey, we need to be here on this day, but. Those, the judges aren't necessary, a lot of those aren't scheduled by them. They're bonded out of jail and we're, we're telling them, hey, you need to be in court on this day. Or we've charged them alongside the road and uh, we're, we're giving them a court date to be here by then. And they try to eliminate it from being on Mondays because they know the courthouse is already busy, so we try to. As officers, we try to pick other days throughout the week, so you don't have this large amount of people, but it just depends on the, the volume of stuff we. Run into as to what's gonna be in court, so. Do all employees air through the front?
I would say ninety-nine percent of them do.
You know, one of the other things I've talked with Kelly's auditor's office about is maybe changing the times that front door gets unlocked and. Making sure the residential judges, uh, Judge Daley, the magistrate judge, Judge Gammon, they all have. Key cards where they can get in sooner if they need to be. Now, if there's a judge, um. From outside that's working here, you know, we just, they just need to communicate a little bit, either with the clerk or. Um, just realize they're not gonna be able to get in until, I think we kind of decided about five till eight.
Well, we've changed, we've already taken, we've already taken, me and Jenny had sat down and talked about that, so the doors don't unlock until eight o'clock. So the doors don't unlock until eight o'clock. But one issue that, that I need to address, I mean, maybe send an email out is. When employees are coming in, they're not making sure the door shuts behind them. So people are walking in with the employees who have the key to get in. So that's just something that we need to address with our staff here in the courthouse. That, that's happened multiple times.
So those are just small things that we've done, but hopefully that we kind of eliminate some of that. Doesn't deviate at all.
And I think there has been some positive dialogue between Kelly and Jenny and, and Dawn and us as supervisors even, I mean, we. We've been talking about it already, so. It's an ongoing issue and, uh, again, we appreciate the support that the supervisors can give for the efforts to really focus in on what. The issues are and what we can hopefully do to, uh, make things safer and more secure for not just the employees, but for the people who citizens that come here. Uh, you're just coming here to get a copy of the deed from the recorder's office. You want to feel safe coming into the, the courthouse. Uh, and, uh, so it, it's, it's not just the judicial branch. It's, it's all of us that use this public facility. Um, but my main concern, obviously, it's chief judge, it's the judicial branch folks and, and the proceedings that we oversee. Thank you very much for your time. I will be back and get with you. All right.
Thanks.
All right. Number twelve, purchase skid loader with grinder attachment, county conservation. This is a piece of equipment that we built out now for. A year. And, uh, still. I'm working through some insurance stuff with it, but, uh, there's a piece of equipment we are going to have to get, uh, get replaced. Probably without it too long now as it is, so. We're hoping that, uh, this, what was the cost of, like, hundred and forty thousand?
That includes a culture.
Again, we are, uh, we are hopeful, looks like, sounds like there's been some movement, um, insurance wise in the last couple of weeks on that. So we're hoping we get a. A good chunk of this back, uh, to replace the other.
I make a motion.
Way to get purchased.
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? Recorder's copy or maintenance agreement? Regular yearly? Inter motion, your motion approved.
Second.
Those in favor? Opposed? Uh, copy or maintenance contract? This is for, uh, motor vehicle, right, Lord? Annual. Annual agreement.
Second.
Those in favor? Those opposed? Uh, other business coming for the board?
Can I have a couple of minutes of your guys' time this morning? Absolutely. Every last several months, I've talked to each of you individually, even for years attempting to get what's on the horizon pointed out to you at sheriff's office. You know, back when the Toma PD. I gave their officer the large increase. I was asked or stated to me, I don't have a problem keeping employees. I said, not right now. But wait, so wait, we have. I guess I. I wanted to address you as a group today that if something isn't done about the wages at the sheriff's office, you aren't going to have a sheriff's office. I've talked to you, I've talked to one of you the other day and the statement was made that you're thinking about a ten percent increase. I said to you that it's not going to be enough. It's maybe too little or too late if you stick with that. I told you there's three or four deputies looking to leave. They're waiting to see what happens here. Actually, that it might be more accurate, four or five waiting to leave. You know, Brian Ziegler and Darren, you know, you've talked to all the, all the employees, you told me you're going to get them more money. And I know this isn't going to be something that happens overnight. Deputies, uh. Are getting told by the Toma PD officers that we're getting ten percent. I find this kind of ridiculous. That you haven't even told us, me or them, what they're looking at getting. You're a board representation for the union. Uh, and talking with them and you haven't even told us or them what you're, what you're thinking. Yes, I don't know why. But I'm sure it's because you're tired of hearing about it already. I've been telling deputies, be patient. You know, there's a meeting in the near future with the new labor attorney, Mike Galloway, who the board just approved. Maybe what he has to say. Will help us. He works with cities and counties across the state. Let's just be patient, see what they have to say. Maybe he has some ideas to recruit, retrain, or retain employees. I talked to Galloway the other day, cause I haven't heard anything from the board. He said, the first thing he told you is you need to get the wages up at the sheriff's office. Darren, you told me you emailed him some stuff we've talked about, sergeants in the jail and everything. I've had a lot of conversation with you before you were elected and after you were elected, but I don't know what to send to him. I'm asking you to send me that email so I can see it involves my department. I want to see what was being said. By April twenty-sixth, I'll be down five crash lopsters in the jail. I was told two more were possibly going to be gone by the end of May. Dispatch, we've been down one or two for the last two years. We're down one person in the office. I've tested nine times for two positions for deputy sheriff last year. In October, I had a fifteen-year veteran turn his letter of resignation. I just want to get sharing a little couple of sentences that he sent. There've been too many years of fighting for equal pay at the sheriff's office. Facts and statistics showing a disparity have been presented. Change has been minimal at best. He left to work the Iowa State Fair Police Department, starting out with thirty-four dollars. Driving an hour and a half to work and back home each day works. This is what you're going to see happen if the wrong has gone on for years. And before the three of you were probably even part of this board. This is what you've been handling. Every year, there's a reason why. We can't raise the increases of the, of the sheriff's salaries, the sheriff's office salaries. The problems why it can't be fixed. In the future, there's going to be problems as to why it can't be fixed. Property evaluations. Uh, state mandates on property taxes being lowered. You name it, we've heard it over the years. Tell me how Avenue's County can pay eighty thousand dollars to their deputies or seventy-seven in Jefferson County. Or Fairfield just raised a large portion of their salaries to seventy-two thousand. The Haskey, Kecup County, sixty-nine thousand. To their law enforcement. They found the money to recruit, retain their employees. Some places have signed, have sign-on bonuses of five, eight thousand dollars. You know, we're not looking for any sign-on bonuses. How do you expect us to compete against that? As I've talked to you each, uh, over the last few months, the future here is something. As I have, as I've said, I've talked to each of you, I wanted to let it known. That in the future for us, there is something done that says it quite makes sense, does it? The union sent you an MOU. Asking you to reattach the sheriff's salary as it was before two thousand nineteen. If the MOU was to be approved by you, it would increase an estimated ninety thousand dollars. That's point zero, zero, three percent of the county's total budget. I know ninety thousand sounds like a lot of money. Let me figure four or five deputies being lost because they go elsewhere for more money. And if you figure approximately fifty thousand dollars is what it costs to hire. Train outfit a deputy and doing the field training. That's two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars it will cost to replace four or five deputies. I think it makes much more sense to pay the ninety thousand to me. And I believe the county has the money. The other thing is that you're losing is over fifty years of law enforcement experience. This will take years to make up if you can make it up. You can't put a price on that. I'm being told that we're, our group is persistent and tiring. Well, I guess if we lose four or five deputies or other employees, you're going to hear a lot more. But only it's not going to be from us. It's going to be from the citizens complaining for lack of service we won't be able to provide. It's being said that you don't think the money will help. We haven't tried. We don't know. I know this isn't working for us. I have increased revenue to help with this. That's your time to find the rest of the money to fix. Now here you won't have to look for. That's all I have for you. I just wanted to give you, have an update where we're at, you know, we're. You know, if we, if we get down to seven crash lopsters in the jail, that's a third of the staff in there. You know, and we've had advertisements out for the last couple of weeks and. I think we've got one application for the jail. So I want to give you guys something to think about. You have any questions for me? Galloway has sent. An email to the union. So that's where we're at. And I think we're going to like.
Probably need to include Dawn in on that.
I mean, I just, I don't understand why it involves my department that I don't. He just sent it to us over the weekend. Again, I'm saying I don't know why, so I'll forward it on to you, but that's.
As a suggestion as well, um. Completely. Different, I guess, from the concerns Dawn mentioned, but just from a liability standpoint. The jail staff probably does. We need, you probably do need to do something to make sure we attract. Yeah, we're, we're a high-volume arrest county, so we process.
They can make more hobby law, yes.
Yeah, um. And I'm just thinking the danger of a lawsuit.
Throwing on, I'm working there, so, yeah.
And I, I know you guys got a lot there, so something to think about too.
Get your stuff in for them too, so. I didn't know this morning we're going to have this, uh, discussion, uh, so I just want to piggyback on some things that have already been. Shared and I think, uh, in my previous role as mayor of the community, uh, I've always been supportive of public safety and want to see that be a strong service. Here in our, our county. And I know we talked to several of you that there is something in the works, but I. I, I'd like to propose a very clear process that you have a committee of second people. The county auditor, board supervisor, the sheriff, who's the head of that department. Um, a couple of deputies who know what the issues are and what they're being held to. And then two people at, at large. That'd be a committee of seven people. I think you can get something done with seven people. And I would give them a timeline. Ninety days to issue a report back to you. You're the governing body. And it's going to take some action on your part to support whatever recommendations we come up with, whether it's Mike Galloway or whoever this committee. Um, it, it seems to me and Don's already made the point, uh. If you have experienced law enforcement and you lose them. It's not just the replacement, it's the downtime of getting them trained in your system. In addition to going through the academy and on the job training and learning a new computer program and, and all that. So I, I think the money is well spent if you invest in your people rather than replace people. And we've got an experienced portion, they've done a great job. And, and we are a high-volume community. I mean, when you compare our county with other counties. We're a high-volume community and I think the data speaks for itself. So it's, it's worth keeping and retaining our, our quality people, their, their experience and their good people. I, I think the other thing that the, the John Q public doesn't appreciate is the, the danger that they face every single day they go out. And whether it's police department or sheriff's deputy. Law enforcement has changed in the last five years and, and so it is dangerous. They ought to be paid a premium for the work they do and risking their lives. Every day, because they don't know when they stop a car, if they're going to get shot or if they're going to open up trunk and find a. Cash of, of AR fifteens or whatever rifles they use. Um. I think the, the point and, and it was, I didn't know the judge was going to be here, but I think we're talking about safety of this building. Here we are putting another demand on the sheriff's department, say. Put a armed person here or hire somebody, law enforcement. It's just not enough people to go around. We've got to make it attractive that want to come here and work. And, and we should be talking as a community because we're all, we all want the same thing. We want safety. And we want people to come to work feeling good about coming to work. So let's take the attitude of we can get this done, but leadership means. We have to take a positive approach that we're going to see this problem for what it is and solve it. And we can find solutions if we pick the brains of the people who are on the frontline every day. And they talk to other folks and they talk to their counterparts in, in the state. So let's, let's do something. Let's not just tweak something for a temporary solution. Let's look at the long term, five years out. What's it going to take to continue to support the sheriff's department for the next five years? And that's equipment and personnel. Um, and you know, and I, I have heard this from, you know, being involved in government. I know sometimes you talk about opening up a contract. Well, if you do it for them, you have it for everybody. No, you don't. You're, you're paid to make a decision of what's best for this community. And right now, the sheriff's department has been understaffed. For years. I mean, and I remember coming before you folks were elected. And, and saying to the previous boards of supervisor, we need more deputies. And we need to pay them a living wage, not just getting by. So I, I would hope that having a committee of seven folks, giving them a timeline. Giving them a, a clear responsibility to bring something back to you and having a public discussion about what will change. If we do this, because we're going to lose some good people. And I, I, I just know from conversations, you don't want to lose these folks. They have the history and the knowledge of the community. Their families are here. We don't want them driving somewhere else or living somewhere else. So. I just hope that, you know, and, and I appreciate and, and I said to, to Darren just recently, I'm glad you're involving Mike Galloway. I think he's a very good resource. That can give you a statewide perspective. But let's take advantage of that and let's have the sheriff and county auditor and supervisor. Lead that committee to do, come back with a recommendation that will solve the problem, not just put a Band-Aid on it. So. Anything we can do to help you and, and I think again. Working with Chad Carrington, chief of police, I think is a, a real key because they talk to each other all the time on the job. So let's. Let's work together to do what's best for Wapalo County.
Thank you.
Any other business coming for the board?
Yes, uh, Jared, I'm with Apex Clean Energy. I've been here a couple of times to talk to you guys about the project that we have going on. Apex is a, uh. You can be scale solar and wind company and we have a. A bit of land we're looking at Wapalo County, kind of in the northeast part of the county where we, we are actively out. And signing leases. This is a entirely voluntary, uh, uh, program that they enter into with us, um. And I just wanted to give you a little bit of a. Update on that. We, uh, have been getting great reception out in the county. People have been very open to this. So we're, we're out there. Like I said, actively signing leases right now. Um, we are confident enough in it that we went ahead and, um. Leasing a space for an office, which is right next to the Chamber of Commerce, you know, the exact address.
Uh, it should be two, one, five East Main Street.
Um, so, so we're, we're here for the, we're here for the long term and, uh. We have a website that'll be, uh, running soon. It's dustyboxwind.com. From there you'll be able to do things like access or community grant, which we give out five, that we give five thousand dollars out quarterly to different organizations that qualify for it. So. I'll be trying to get, promote that where, uh, we, we've used that for education. Um, volunteer fire departments for just a. Pretty big mix of different community organizations. So that'll be available for that as well. And I know Darren, you had some questions. Uh, I had to meet with me today with my colleagues. If you would like to take a minute after. To answer some of those questions or.
I would. We're supposed to have a meeting at ten thirty on the screen.
We can communicate over email that, if that works. So have, have you guys heard any, any questions or concerns on your?
Most of the questions, concerns I addressed to you is.
We'll get those and we will get those answered.
Big thing was the decommission, so.
And that's, I can, I can say for that, that is something that we take care of at the end of the lease.
And Jeff, you've been, uh, in contact with some other counties as well as far as.
I have a draft ordinance on my desk. Uh, I'm going to look at it here this afternoon. You get it on the books, hopefully at our next meeting.
If you guys have any questions or concerns, you know how to reach me. I mean, I love to chat about it.
If you want, you can send us that.
Just on my email. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anything else? I'm going to take emotional adjournment. Those in favor? I, I, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.